Good evening and welcome to the Monday, August 8, 2016 Board of Education meeting. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have a couple of agenda items I'd like to suggest that we move around a little bit. I think, first of all, item 9.2 is a receive item on the social studies curriculum. I think, Dr. Freeman, you've asked if we try to take that up now, and I think that's quite reasonable under the circumstances.
You have members of the Social Studies Committee here tonight who are ready to share their work with you. Dr. Keen regretfully cannot be here this evening, but Dr. Stacy Ewing and other members of the Social Studies Curriculum Committee team are here to share with you tonight. I will turn it over to Stacy and allow her to introduce the rest of the committee.
So, thank you for letting me come tonight and speak to you on Dr. Keen's behalf. I definitely know that she wanted to be here, and I'm sorry that she's not. On the screen are all of the committee members. We have two of them here, Ralph from Guilford High School and Rita from Adams Middle School. But you can see that with our committee members, we have them from almost every school and from all grade levels. Do you guys just want to wave or in case people don't know who you are? Our committee members have met tirelessly over the past year, really understanding the revisions that need to be made and why we're making them, and they should definitely be applauded for their efforts. Many of them went way above and beyond just the normal, regular work and met with Dr. Keen tirelessly on this. So, this is essentially the process that we went through. We started meeting in February, and really, that was just to understand the purpose, why we were revising the document, and then to establish what the vision was and what the goals are for our district. We then really talked about national and state resources. We reviewed formatting options, and we spent a lot of time on the guiding principles, which I'll get to in a minute. And then we looked at instructional approaches. Over the summer, we met for two days over the summer where they worked together in teams and individually to create, to kind of put final touches on this document. And then many of them also met with Dr. Keen individually to make sure that there was coherence across grade levels so that we didn't miss anything. And then in between all of those dates, though, what you don't see is all of the time and effort that they put in in between. So, this is our guiding principles. You can find it on page four in the document, which is probably much easier to read in the document. But these are essentially, we spent a long time trying to determine what was it that students needed and what was important, and this is what we came up with. And from this, we constantly revisited these guiding principles to make sure that the work that we were doing and the revisions that we were creating matched what we were asking and what our beliefs If we talk about why we need revision, the big idea here is inquiry, and there are four dimensions of inquiry. And really, we're asking students to work independently and with others, to ask questions, and then apply different disciplinary lenses with those questions, to work with different source materials and determine what is opinion versus what is actually evidence-based, and make distinctions between that, and then communicate what they have found and where appropriate, take action. So, this is really that take action part. That's new. Usually, we work on, just tell me what you've learned, but now, what do I do with this information? How do I become a better student, a better civic, how do I have better civic responsibility? So, with that, if we want our students to be more involved in inquiry, our teaching needs to reflect that. So, as teachers, we need to be able to ask questions that are going to create tasks that are engaging, that work for collaboration. We need to create a community where students are listening to each other and articulating their ideas and then expressing them to each other. Another way to look at it, this is probably my favorite slide. If you look on the right, it talks about the coverage approach. That's very typical of our current curriculum, where we're asking students to know facts, to memorize things, study for a test, get the answers on the test, and then maybe retain one or two things if you're lucky, and then just kind of move on. Really, with this, with this, with the revisions that we're asking for, we're giving students the responsibility. We're asking them to collaborate. We're asking them to think strategically. We're asking them to look at multiple resources, to vet these resources, and decide what is appropriate and what is not, and to take care and action. I think one of the most important things, though, with this whole inquiry idea is that it's not just done once. It's done again and again. And if it doesn't work the first time, the students need stamina to revisit it again and develop a new idea. The other big idea in this is really the C3 connects to the Common Core. So, as I'm sure that you all know, the anchor standards that are in the Common Core are the same for every grade, and they also serve as the foundation, the literacy anchor standards serve as the foundation for the social studies inquiry dimensions. So, now that you kind of understand why we need the revision and the purpose behind that, I just want to talk to you about the format of the document so that as you're looking through it, you understand what it is that you're looking at. So, there are really three sections to this document. Section one is just a, it's a three-page chart that talks about the topics for each grade level and the content. Section two is the majority of the document, and that goes into detail about what curriculum will be taught. And then section three are the resources. So, if we look closely on pages six through eight, if you want to take a second, turn there. You can see that these are the topics for grades K through 12, and then some of the content that's going to be taught under the topics. As a committee, we talked at length about what should be taught at each grade level, what themes and ideas should be explored, and we really wanted to make sure that there was coherence across the grade levels. And we also needed to make sure that there weren't any gaps and that we didn't miss anything. You'll see that at the high school, it changes, and it's by, it's done by, Ralph, help me out, is it content, is it the modern history, because it's not just grade level.
Content and theme.
Thank you. There you go. I knew he would know. Section two is the majority of the document, and that's divided up by grade levels. Each grade starts with a cover page, and this is the cover page that we chose to go with. If you are familiar with the Language Arts document, this cover page should look pretty familiar to you. We did that on purpose because of the strong link between the literacy and the social studies, knowing that social studies teachers are responsible for teaching literacy. And you can see the theme up there for the grade level, and then the primary discipline, which are the four major disciplines in every grade, K through 12. But what changes are the different categories within that discipline. So, some grades will teach certain content, specific things underneath each discipline, and other grades will not. After the cover page, all of the remaining pages look similar to what you see up on the screen, which I know is pretty small, so you might want to just pick a grade and kind of look at it. But you can see the theme and the primary discipline is repeated so that you know what you're looking at. And then we go a little bit more in-depth into the category, and that's really to give you the big picture. What is it that this category is talking about? From there, we have the essential questions, and that really helps to guide the teaching and the learning of the big ideas or the concepts at each grade level course. And then from there, you have the content elaborations, and those are just statements that are really there to help the teacher define the category and the essential question. Below that, you'll see the expectations for learning, and that's what the student, those are statements that students should be able to do. And then if you look at the right-hand side, you have the instructional approaches, and these could be tasks or examples or ideas for inquiry instruction. And this is just a way to help teachers know how to deliver effective instruction. Section three contains all of the resources. Here's a list of all of the resources that you'll see in section three. It starts on page 172. As far as electronic resources are concerned, these could be websites, primary source documents, sample lesson plans, or different teacher materials that we thought were appropriate. One thing to note is this is a living document, so these resources will change. So, as we find better materials, we'll definitely be adding them in. If we find something didn't quite work, we'll take it out. So, our next steps, once this is approved, the committee is not done working on it yet. I don't know if they know that, but they will meet again and will design the rollout for the teachers and the administrators. And then it will be teachers that will need to align the instruction and to the new curriculum that you have in front of you. And we're also going to ask for their feedback because it is a living document. So, we want to make adjustments. We want this to be the best that it can be. We will continue to look for resources. That's always one of the hardest things. And then we'll also consider any adjustments that need to be made to the elementary report card. And that's pretty much the Social Studies Revision Committee in a nutshell.
And when would you expect that this would be implemented?
We have talked about that as a committee, and if we can roll it out sometime October and allow teachers time to align the instruction to the new curriculum, they would be able to start implementing it next year, obviously not at the very beginning of the year, but they could work on a unit and begin working through that process. Are there any other questions?
This is less of a dramatic change from what we're doing currently than either the ELA or the math curriculum were. Those were much more significant shifts. Much of what we've done here, and it's not unusual with curriculum revisions, is in many ways, the document is catching up with the instructional practices that have begun to permeate our classrooms already in these areas. And I just want to add that Stacy and Rita and Ralph have been working alongside Dr. Keen's desk, working on this. Every time I'm in through this summer, one of the three of them has been in working on this document with Dr. Keen to have it ready for tonight. This is not a significant sea change in the way that we've been doing instruction. It's generally taking pockets of excellence around inquiry and expecting it of all teachers at a more systemic level than we have in the past. But you've got the experts here if you have questions for them.
Any other questions tonight? Obviously, we haven't had a chance to review this ourselves, so it's a little hard to get into it in any detail, but I assume that one or more members of the committee would be available in September.
Correct. The committee members will be back and ready to have conversations at your next meeting.
Well, I guess what I'd like to suggest is that each of us take some time over the next couple of weeks to review these, and if there are questions, to email you.
Absolutely.
I hope you'll be available by email. It's not in person.
Yes, for sure.
If your questions go through Dr. Keen, she can make sure that they get to the appropriate right.
They'll get to the committee.
Okay. And so then we can take this up in September. Does anybody have any other questions now? Okay. Well, great. Well, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for all your work and for being here tonight.
Thank you, everyone, who worked on this.
I guess we should probably do the minutes at this point. There are two special meetings, and I think Dr. Balistrace, Mr. Sands, and I were the only participants. That would be 3.1 and 3.2. So, is that, would one of you please make a motion to approve those?
Second.
All in favor?
Excuse me, Mr. Boss, I do have a correction, and I'm going to ask your help or Paul's help with this. I believe on the meeting of Monday, June 22, I believe Attorney Dan Murphy stood in for Ken Weinstein.
I think that's right.
You are correct. That correction should be made. Thank you.
He was not, so I believe it was Dan Murphy, too. I'm asking about the name.
Yes, Dan Murphy is correct. We had Dan Murphy from Keenan Escolera and McHale, and we had Attorney Steve Murphy was present as well.
Right, okay.
That's correct. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, great. With that correction, then, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's three to zero. And then, June 27, is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Oh, you can't. I'm sorry. Did we approve all of them?
Oh, this is the one.
Yeah, yeah. Is the 27th okay?
Oh, I see.
Was that part of the motion?
Oh, I'm sorry.
There are two special meetings.
Yes, there were two special meetings. I will make a motion to approve the second on June 27, the second meeting.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
So, that's three, is it three, nothing as well now?
Now, the other, the other one, make a motion to approve those.
The June 27 workshop meeting.
The workshop meeting.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Any corrections, changes, additions, clarifications? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. July 11, regular meeting. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second. Don't be bashful. I need a second. Okay. Any changes, corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
And I'm going to abstain. I was not.
Okay. And then finally, the July 18, 2016 special meeting relating to the new principal at Cox. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections, changes? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained.
Dr. Myers abstains from that. All right. Okay. Item four, public forum for topics on the board agenda. Anybody here for something on the agenda? No? Are you here for the school, the lunch program still? Okay. Why don't we take that up now, then? If you can maybe lead the discussion on this, there are two, I think, two items. 9.6, the participation in the healthy food certification, and 9.7, receive for possible action proposal to increase lunch prices. Maybe, can you come up maybe and? You can either sit next to Dr. Moore, if you want to stand at the podium, whatever would make you feel less uncomfortable.
All right. So, item 9.6 is to act on participation in the healthy food certification program. I'm not as knowledgeable about this, I'm sure, as you are, so I may say some of this incorrectly. But we, the Guilford District has opted to participate in, this is the state program, correct, whereby we have to meet certain requirements for healthy standards for foods. We've had discussions over the past year about whether we might want to consider, as some other districts have done, including Madison, moving away from these requirements in order not to not have healthy foods, but to have more freedom in the way we design our menus and structure portion sizes and some things like that. So, we're going to be looking at that over the coming year. But at this point, we are going to continue to participate in the healthy food program. And as a result, we need to certify that the meals that we serve will meet certain requirements.
And through participation, we receive subsidies for food costs through the state of Connecticut.
Thank you.
Choosing to step out of this, which is something we're considering, we would lose those subsidies, but we would explore ways to make them up by having offerings that extended beyond the state limitations. But at this point, we want to continue to draw those subsidies.
Well, and also, I think you can learn a lot from watching what goes on in Madison.
Correct. We have some.
Because they opted out this year, and let's see what happens.
We're going to watch closely and try to learn and make a more informed recommendation to you on this in the future.
Can that summarize it, basically? All right. So then, is there a motion that we continue for the 2016-2017 school year to participate in the healthy food program and so certified to the state of Connecticut?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And then 9.7 is to receive for possible action proposal to modestly increase school lunch prices. Do you want to summarize that, or do you want to summarize? Do you want to summarize? Go ahead.
Sure. We're just looking to do non-increase for breakfast and to do a minimum increase for lunch of about 25 cents so that we can increase our choices and upgrade some of our meal items and what's available. So, then this way it'll help to benefit and boost the program in giving more options to students and healthier selections.
And you've looked at other districts, how they're priced similar to Guilford.
Yeah, and we're very much under both of our neighbors, Branford and Madison. So, it's bringing us a little bit closer to the area and the amounts that they're at.
We did talk about this in some detail in the Operations Committee meeting beforehand, so I don't want to short-circuit the discussion, but we did spend quite a bit of time on it. The proposal specifically is to have no increase for breakfast at any level, grade level. For the, for lunch, a 25-cent increase from $2.50 to $2.75 at the elementary schools, an increase of 25 cents from $2.75 to $3.00 in the middle schools, and at the high school, go from $3.25 to an increase of either 25 cents up to $2.25, depending on the content of the specific menu at the high school.
Correct. At the high school, we want to offer different tiered lunches. The base lunch would increase from $3.25 to $3.50, but we would also offer a premium lunch option that students could buy at a cost of $5.50. And we believe, in fact, that that change will increase student purchasing of lunches at the high school by having a premium option that they could purchase rather than the base state-approved lunch. And so, we'll offer both of those at the high school and, again, report to you on what that looks like as we roll that out this year.
And in most cases, we still remain below even with the increase, the prices of our neighboring towns.
Correct. It remains a very reasonable school lunch price. It does not exceed that of neighboring communities.
And the premium lunch still meets the nutritional requirements.
Yes, it will.
Correct.
And this also, obviously, doesn't affect students who are eligible for free and reduced lunch. This has zero impact on them.
It has a zero impact on them. They'll be available, they'll be able to have any meal option that's available and still have either be free or the reduced price, no matter what tier level it is. We would have that small amount to cover that cost.
It's not a big part, obviously, here, but, you know, nonetheless, to the extent there are people in that program, that this doesn't.
It doesn't affect them. It only gives them more options.
No, these increases at no level impact students who are receiving that sort of support. Correct.
Okay. So, is there a motion that we approve the increases as recommended in the amounts that I stated?
So moved. Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you very much. We wanted to do this tonight to get, in order to get it rolled out before the school year started. It really wouldn't be a good thing to start after the year.
All the packing information will go out very shortly.
Right. It's still a very reasonable price, so I think, you know, we should be very optimistic that this will be greeted with understanding, shall we say. Okay, good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, Eric.
Are there others here who have an agenda item or just here for other? Okay.
I think Peter's just here to see how we work.
Well, it's too late. You should have come before.
Because you already signed off.
Basically, you should have come before the last meeting if you really wanted it.
It's the second Monday.
That's true. Okay. Did I say public forum for, I probably did that already. Item five is review of the expenditures. Those were mine. There are two sets of proposals. One is, or not proposals, one, two sets of spending to be approved. One is for the 2015-16 school year. The bills were actually paid in July, but they were actually credited to the 2015-16 school year because they were for expenditures incurred during that particular year. So, the total expenditures for the month of July credited to the 1516 budget were $1,112,896.35, if I've got that correct, Ms. Trudeau. Basically, now, the, we did also finish in balance. This is virtually closed out. There are maybe a couple of straggler bills that wander in, but basically, we're closed out in a budget of about $58 million. We were $21,000 unexpended, which is an extraordinarily close budgeting, spending total for, given the budgeted amounts. I think it's fair to say that that reflected some very hard work by both Ms. Trudeau and the rest of the financial office, as well as by the administration and the staff and the faculty. This was, there were a lot of challenges this year, and there were some things that we didn't anticipate. There were, we had to hire an elementary school teacher in the beginning of the year, too. And we had, there were always, were going to be surprises in special education. There were people that we just didn't anticipate we were going to be outplacing, where PPTs came in after the budget was adopted, and it wound up leading to outplacements. There were not as many retirements last year as maybe would be typical. And so, this was a challenging year. Nonetheless, there, it appears that we are going to, once again, not have had to have gone back to the Board of Finance and ask for supplemental appropriation. So, we are slightly to the good, to the, I don't want to say in the black, because that's, we didn't expend the completely appropriated amount, or completely expend the appropriated amount. There is a $21,000 surplus, if you will, almost insignificant percentage-wise of the total budget. I am going to suggest that we visit with the Board of Finance to ask for their concurrence, if we need it. I don't think we do, but to put it into our pension fund, just to try to make that a little closer to fully funded. So, there are, you know, and I think, and I think the perhaps the most positive part of that is that we were able to, there were a larger number of retirements this year than I think we maybe anticipated back in February or January, and that led to a pretty substantial payment to retiring teachers for unused sick pay. Any teachers who were hired before 1998 have a contractual right to a certain amount of unused sick pay to be paid for in a lump sum when they retire. That has not been a provision in Guilford for 18 years, but nonetheless, it does apply to some people who were hired back in earlier, in an earlier contractual set of circumstances. So, we were able to take care of almost all of that in the 1516 budget with those retirements. There were a couple that we're going to have to pay out of 1617, but it's manageable, we think. So, we're, the long and the short of it is with a lot of effort and a lot of hard work on the part of the financial office and the administration and the faculty, we were able to come in within the appropriated amounts. So, I would like to make a motion that we approve the July expenditures in the net amount of $1,112,896.35 credited to the 1516 budget.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Refused.
Okay. Dr. Myers recuses. And then there were some very brief financial reports for, in July, for the 1617 fiscal year. Very few salaries because many teachers don't take salary over the summer. There were the general, non-unusual special ed and some other, there is a $9,500 fee to the International Baccalaureate Program, which we're happy to see is proceeding. But the total expenditures credited to the new fiscal year, 1617, were $2,434,440.36. So, I'd like to move that we approve those expenditures.
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? We did, again, talk about this in detail in the Operations Committee meeting. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you. That's it for that. Any communications, other communications? We really had a lot of communications. I did have one communication about the article, which I didn't, unfortunately, I didn't see, and about the start times and the career. I was away. But there was one email encouraging us that if we go, if we do anything with start times, that it be revenue or expense neutral to the extent possible. I think, I'm actually probably overstating. It was that it be expense-neutral period and forget the possible. So, you know, but that's something we've made clear we're going to take into account, so. So, you know, but that's something we've made clear we're going to take into account, so... Any other communications?
The only other thing I'd remind you is I shared a letter with you that we authored to Secretary King. The regulations related to the reauthorization of the Education and Secondary Public School Act are out for comment, and we are commenting on those. And so, for what it's worth, organizations like CAPS and CAE and AAAS, which is the National Superintendent's Organization, are encouraging the writing of the regulations to be within the spirit of the reauthorization and to devolve authority for educational decisions, particularly around assessment and accountability and teacher supervision evaluation back to states and through the states, back to school districts. So we will continue to monitor the writing of those regs. We will continue to comment, and I'll continue to share those comments with you.
Great. Okay. Student reps, no report, obviously. 8.1 Superintendent's report?
Yeah, we did want to share with you that today we began our annual summer retreat. The entire extended administrative team met for about seven hours today. We met at the Guilford Yacht Club. It is a beautiful location. We had time to have breakfast together, have lunch together, spend some time together. We also, today, looked deeply at some high-leverage instructional practices that are coming from some of the most current research coming out of the Institute for Learning at the University of Pittsburgh. We also looked at some high-impact leadership practices that is coming out of work being completed by Michael Fulon and some of his colleagues. And we applied those new researches and new learnings for us. We started with last year's agenda, looking at what we set out to accomplish last year as a leadership team, looking at how far we have come in that work, what remains to be done in that work, and how maybe thinking about these instructional practices and these leadership practices, we can move further in that direction. I would suggest that it was a very good start today to our work. Tomorrow, we reconvene. We're being joined tomorrow by Dr. Liz City out of Harvard. She's going to be joining us to work with, again, leadership practices around efficiency and getting the most out of our work. We will finish the day tomorrow by looking at pulling that together. And we end our time together by looking at the annual priorities and initiatives that we will then bring to you in your meeting in September so that we've talked about the work that, as a leadership team, we want to bring forward and present it to you and ask for you to have your input and get your fingerprints on that work and help shape that work as we move forward next year. It was a very good couple of days, and we're very much looking forward to tomorrow. Dr. City's work is impressive, and we're happy to have her joining us here in Guilford. I think that's a real coup for us. I also wanted to direct your attention to an elementary enrollment report that you have in your packet. We did make it clear this year that we would be tracking kindergarten enrollment, particularly over the summer. At this point, we want to point out that kindergarten enrollment stands at about 196 students. Well, it is 196 students as of today. You will see that we have...
Which is down 10% from last year.
It's what we had projected rather than what we actually realized last year. The kindergarten enrollment to date is falling in line with projections from our demographic study rather than with last year's experience. We're not done. There will continue to be some enrollment, particularly in kindergarten, through the first few days. But we also sometimes have adjustments downward. So what I want to direct your attention to is that we have 49 enrolled at Cox, 52 at Jones, 51 at Lakes, 44 at LEE, and you see the projected kindergarten class sizes at those numbers. Even with a few more small enrollments, what we believe this means is that we will not be coming to you for an additional kindergarten section. We believe that the staffing we hold currently at the elementary level will hold through this year. So I will draw your attention to a few classroom size spikes, particularly in grade two at Cox and particularly in grade four at Jones. But I also want to point out that across the district, the information in front of you shows an average elementary class size of 18 students, K through four. Last year, with the additional staffing that we put in place, two additional sections that went in unbudgeted, we had average elementary class sizes of 17.5. So I know that average is a little misleading. The reality is, is that we will have class sizes in our elementary schools as low as 14 and as high as 21. But I don't believe that these numbers argue for the addition of any sections at this time. Now, we will, of course, continue to monitor through the end of this month. And if something should change dramatically, might return to you. But at this point, I'm not recommending any changing to the staffing at the elementary level based on these numbers.
Based on history, what... How much of a change would you see between now and the start of school for kindergarten?
Little. We're over the hump. I will tell you that the kindergarten numbers won't stay the same. We might see another eight or 10 enrollments if they all land in one school. That could create a problem. If they're spread across the four, we shouldn't have concerns moving forward. I do believe that we've done a better job advertising and turning out earlier registrations.
When I'm looking at the final report from the projections, it looks to me like they predicted 167 kindergartens in 2016. Is that...
I think that's right. I think... And when you say that this is in line with the projections, I think that's actually still significantly higher than the projections. That's my recollection.
But not as high as last year.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, but that... I mean, that's... Am I reading that right? I mean, they're 20% lower. The predictions were 20% lower than what...
I don't have those numbers in front of me, but yes, I think that you're reading them correctly.
We should look at that, but that's my recollection.
I mean, I'm looking at it right now. It...
The number sounds right. Yes, Dr. Moore, I think that we are above projections.
I mean, last year, the prediction for the K was 206. This year, the prediction was 167. So, you know, the predicted drop was like 40 kids.
It didn't drop that significantly.
Nowhere near that.
Nowhere near that.
And the other thing, I mean, looking historically, I mean, full-day kindergarten could mitigate this effect some, but traditionally, like, if you march out where the kindergarten enrollments end up in the numbers a few years later, they go up substantially, whether they're Montessori schools or, you know...
Correct. We used to see a bump in first and second grade where students might receive kindergarten services out of district privately and then join us for first or second grade. I do think that we might see less of that bump moving forward. I still believe that full-day kindergarten and the opening of the new high school, I think as well as some of the... Just the academic successes that we've experienced, I'm not as confident in the projections as we were in the last demographic study that was done. I do think that we're approaching the time where we may want to ask the authors of the study to take another look.
If we were to look at the high school and the middle schools to do a comparable analysis, what would that show us?
Those numbers are more stable than the elementary numbers are over the summer. It is the change in kindergarten particularly, but the elementary numbers tend to move more. The middle schools and the high schools have seen little change from what we brought to you during the budgeting cycle. And right now, you know, we're moving what was declining enrollment forward, and now we've seen that declining enrollment almost stabilize. It's not continuing to decline as it was for a couple of years.
Well, as it relates to the high school enrollment, is there any sign that the new building has had an impact on that?
No. We're not seeing increasing enrollment there, and we haven't seen a dramatic drop in the number of students who... Remember, we did a study a couple of years ago. We looked at students who go from our eighth grade to a private school. I think that there are anecdotal stories of students who chose to stay with us because we opened a new high school. But statistically, we didn't stop sending some of our ninth graders to Xavier or to Hopkins. Some families continue to make that choice. I don't think the number changed significantly.
And this has kind of been stated. I mean, we are going to... We're not going to be able to disaggregate full-day K from that impact on the K numbers. I mean, you have people making moving decisions, perhaps based on a new high school. You're not... That you just can't disaggregate.
They might be in sixth grade.
No, that's right. I mean, you just... You can't disaggregate them for this. You know, this is just the numbers person in me. But if I recall historically, and it may be like 10 years ago when my kids were there, Lakes was the largest population, was it not? Are we seeing some shifting amongst elementary schools? Does anyone...
I think that's not... I think that's right.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it used to be that Lakes had the largest, at least in some grades, had the largest enrollment, and then Jones was second, and it looks like Jones may be...
There's just... It's just an interesting shift. It's not particularly anything... It's just... I find it interesting.
And it may vary from year to year.
Yeah.
You know, when your groups are this small, you know, a not huge...
But to have... To have Lakes have three classes at every grade... I mean, we were... My kids were there. There were regularly four classes per grade.
Four sections at every grade level.
Yeah, it's just an interesting shift.
But now you've got four sections at Jones.
That's right. That's right. You're seeing some shifts.
Yeah, and a 20 reduction in kindergarten is, you know, is a practical matter, is immaterial from a staffing point of view, because they're divided across five, four schools and three or four sections per school. So, okay, great. So there's a couple of classes that have one fewer kid in them.
Yeah, that's right.
And two years ago at LEE, we were beginning to assume that we were going to have multiple grades with only two sections, and that is beginning to look as it may be a blip that is traveling through rather than a change in population at LEE.
Right. Right.
So we'll get some better data, and remember, the official enrollment date is October 1st, so our official numbers aren't until our October board meeting, but I think we would like to get some kind of a report next month.
We will have an update on these numbers. I can include middle and high school as well for your September meeting, and then we will have official enrollment numbers for you at your October meeting.
It might not be a terrible idea to just reproduce the page that Dr. Moore is looking at and include that in our packets just to make sure that...
Sure.
So we can look at it. Because I think you're right, and we may have to talk about trying to update that report if we're going to make decisions based on it.
That's right.
And if it's already off.
Two years in a row, right.
If it's off two years in a row...
In the same direction, trending the same way.
In the same direction by 20%.
Yeah, that's right. That's right. Yeah.
I will, in the next report in September, include all grade levels as well as reference to the demographic study. I apologize for not having it tonight. My purpose here was to really be able to address the staffing concern.
Yeah, yeah.
No, that's right. No, that's right.
We know that we're not recommending any staffing increases.
Sure.
And finally, the only... Well, almost finally. I want to share that we have received another round of radon testing. And at this time, all spaces in this building are below acceptable radon levels. The two spaces that we had that were left that were of concern, remember, one was a custodial space and one was an electrical closet. In those areas, we caulked and sealed all seams and penetrations in the slabs and in the walls and adjusted the pressure in those places to be a little more positive. At this point, all spaces in this building are below acceptable levels. That's not an official reading. We won't be able to complete an official test until between November and March, which we will do early in that window. And once we have that official testing, we'll share that with you as well. We will be testing all buildings officially within that annual window. We test everywhere. But that issue has been remediated here at the high school. And we're happy about that and have no concerns that we'll have issues when we test again officially.
Terrific.
And then really, finally, the last piece that I'd like to share is that I will be out of the country from this coming Friday through the following Friday. I will be in Jordan, working with principals in Amon. Dr. Keen and Mr. Bowden will both be in district and available. I will be difficult to reach. And so if there are any concerns that you have, you will be in able hands with the two of them while I'm away.
All right. Well, learn a lot and be safe. Those would be my two suggestions if...
Maybe not in that order.
Maybe not in that order, yeah. Although I'm sure it's a very valuable thing to do.
It's a really exciting opportunity, and I'm looking forward to being able to come back and share some of it with all of you.
Terrific.
Also, I guess, communications, I sent this out to the board in general, but you were elected, appointed to the Board of the National Superintendent.
Yeah, I was appointed a little while ago, but I've begun filling the role as a member of the Governing Board of AAAS, which is the National Superintendent's Association. And it did afford me this past July the opportunity to be on Capitol Hill in a group of about 200 superintendents and meeting with our entire Connecticut delegation and thanking them for the work that they've done on the behalf of the children in the state of Connecticut and encouraging them to continue to focus on educational work around the children. So, thank you.
Good. 9.1 on the board agenda, some personnel items. There is one resignation. It's Christopher Skaggs, art teacher at the high school. Is there a motion to ratify his resignation?
Some moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And then ratify an appointment of an administrator. That is Lisa Eaton, who would be a coordinator, special ed coordinator at Adams and Baldwin Middle School, effective August 22nd. Is there a motion to ratify her appointment?
Some moved.
She was filling the position that was vacated by Mary Ann Martino. She will be the special ed coordinator at the middle level.
Second?
Second?
Tell us anything about her.
I'm happy to. She is joining us from Old Saybrook. She has been a special education teacher in Old Saybrook. She has, I want to say, spent about 15 years in that school system. She is a leader from the classroom. She teaches special education methods courses for Central Connecticut State University, I believe, is where she's been doing that level of instruction. She comes with ringing recommendations from the principal with whom she has worked in Old Saybrook Middle School, the previous administration of Old Saybrook Middle School, and her current superintendent. We think she's going to be a good fit for an already talented special education team. She spent her first day with us today at the retreat. We're excited to have Lisa come on board.
Does she have a graduate degree?
She does, yes. She's got a master's degree as well as a sixth-year degree in administration, masters in special education.
So somebody made the motion. Was there a second?
Yes, I did. Yep.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And then finally, ratify three appointments. There's Nicholas Demore, language arts at Adams. Jessica Robeson, speech and language pathologist at LEE. Rebecca Luther, speech and language pathologist at Jones. That's a .8 FTE. Alyssa Dunn, English teacher, .5 FTE at the high school. Mary Rose Sargea, Jones, grade three. And then Tess Merling, kindergarten at Cox Elementary School. So is there a motion to ratify those appointments?
Some moved. Second?
Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So the obvious question, though, is now what remains to be done hiring-wise.
With the exception of a .4 vacancy in the technology department here at the high school, we are full in all certified areas at this time. And that is going to be a challenging fill for Mr. Masenti. Tech ed is a difficult position, and at a .4 FTE, it's going to be a little bit of a difficult find. He's been working with Mr. Bowden's office. We're thinking about some, maybe, some creative options to fill in that position. But we continue to be posting. We continue to be looking. We continue to be recruiting.
Did we lose someone at the .4, or this is part of an adjustment in staffing?
Both. So we lost... We had a retirement out of the tech ed position, and there was some readjusting. Some courses across technology and art can be cross-certified. And so we were able to absorb some of that offering into the art department with existing FTEs there.
Okay.
And then we were also able to recognize some reductions. And so what had gone out as a .1 is only going to be refilled as a .4, and that is going to be a more challenging find. But we're continuing to look, and we'll keep you apprised. It's the only non-certified vacancy. It's the only certified vacancy at this time.
Okay. 9.2 we did. 9.3 is to act on a resolution relating to the Francis S. Landorf Trust. We did get notification that a former resident of Guilford established a trust several years ago and that the remainder of it would revert to the Board of... or the high school to be used for college scholarships when a particular event happened. That particular event has happened. And so the trustee, First Niagara Bank, has asked if it can send us the money to be used for scholarships. They have asked for a resolution that we authorize Dr. Freeman to make that formal request to the trustee. So is there a motion that we do so?
Some moved.
Second? Did somebody second?
Yeah.
Okay. And I should say that we really don't have a lot more details about this yet. We don't really know what the principle is. We don't know what... The terms are relatively general, just to provide scholarships for suitable candidates with a need, which is terrific. We will try to get some more information about what Ms. Landorf's wishes were and what her background was and what led her to this very generous bequest, I guess is what it would be, right? And so we will try to get some more information about that, but this is at least the first step in that. So motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. That's terrific. Does she have any living relatives around? I guess we don't know.
Nothing we know at this time. So with this action, I'll be able to reach out and begin collecting more information. begin collecting more information and hope to learn more about her as well as the specifics about the bequest.
Great. Okay. 9.4 is to act on a fairly relatively limited series of budget transfers to end the 2015-16 year. Do you want to talk about that?
Sure. As discussed earlier, we were able to absorb most of the payout of the sick pay for the retiring teachers within the 2015-2016 budget, so we had room in the budget overall for that amount, but it wasn't in the salaries line where we needed it. It was kind of spread throughout. So in order to get the proper amount into the salaries line, we would like to move a total of $101,100, coming from employee benefits, $1,100, purchased services, $45,000, supplies and materials, $15,000, capital, $25,000, and transportation, $15,000, out of those categories and into salaries. So I'd like to make a motion that we approve that transfer.
Second?
Second.
Any questions?
I think the transfer from employee benefits is $1,100.
Right.
You said $1,000.
$1,000, oh, $1,100.
Okay.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. 9.5 is to act on a special education transportation bid. Do you want to take this?
Sure.
Keeping you busy here tonight.
Yep. So in Guilford, we do something that I think is a little bit unusual. When we go out for bid for the services provided by transportation companies to transport our special education students who attend facilities out of town, back and forth each day to their homes. And instead of asking the companies to bid on all the routes, we bid each one separately. And when we started doing this, gosh, 10 years ago?
Been quite a while.
It's been a while. We realized a significant savings, and it's still the best way to do it. We still have savings doing it this way. It's a lot more work. It's more work to manage it, but it's best for us. And so the business office has produced a chart of which of the bus companies bid, what amounts on what routes. They're all companies that we've worked with in the past and were satisfied with the services that they provided. And what we'd like to do, and it's in packet item 9.5, so we heard from five different providers, and they're bidding on about 15 routes, it looks like, and some didn't bid on each of them. But there's quite a range in the amounts, and what we'd like to do, and I'd make a motion that we do this, is to authorize the superintendent or his designee to go ahead and enter into contracts with the low bidder on each of the separate routes.
Twenty-three routes across five bidders.
And we've got no hesitation about any of the low bidders being able to provide the services.
They're satisfied with all the responses.
Okay. Motion's been made, second? Motion's been made and seconded. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
So 9.6 we did, 9.7 we did, 9.8 is Dr. Valastresi to receive some, act on recommendations.
Right, act on recommendations from the policy committee. You have in front of you policy 6324. This is simply identifying within this policy that what we previously knew as the strategic school profiles is now the profile and performance report. So this is a text change. So I make a motion that we approve the change to this policy.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Excellent job.
Thank you. Hard work, but someone has to do it.
Somebody has to do it, that's right. Look for a pay increase. Any, item 10, policy committee reports.
Policy committee. The policy committee is probably gonna try to meet sometime in the next month. We have, you know, legislative updates that come every year. CAE helps us sort through some of those, so we'll be going over that. And there's some last looks at the transportation policies and regs, and we'll be reviewing that one last time. So coming back to you in September.
Okay. Operations committee, anything other than?
I think we covered it, but perhaps just to mention that there really are no facilities projects going on that will affect the beginning of school at all. We're in good shape.
Correct. Yep, there are no-
Everybody's got windows.
Yes, no window replacements, no front security upgrades.
No.
No, we will have a smooth opening to school this year.
All right. Good. Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Committee, do we, have we got a schedule for what we're doing?
We do. We do have topics pushed out through the next year, and I wouldn't be surprised if on the heels of our administrative conversations today and tomorrow, that we don't have some suggestions for topics either for the CIA agenda or for some workshop meetings moving forward.
Okay. All right, so as soon as you know about that, just, I think, share them with us and take a look. Building Committee Liaison, I think we did, I think everybody is aware that the Building Committee did go ahead to vote in favor of moving forward with an artificial turf field here at the high school, but with the plastic-coated sand infill as opposed to crumb rubber infill. That work is, I think, starting, or soon to start.
It is. They're doing prep for it now, and it should be completed by mid-October.
The, they're very close to being done effectively with the entire project. And in relation to that, I did receive word this week that, or last week, that Scott Pinkney, who is the chair of the Building Committee, the high school Building Committee, is going to resign from the Building Committee and just because of some professional responsibilities. And Barbara Casey is going to take over as chair of that committee. You know, I'm sure that proportionally Scott will have attended about 99 percent of the meetings of the Building Committee, given how close they are to the end of the project, but I have very little doubt about the, that they all underestimated the amount of commitment that this was going to be.
No way.
But I also have absolutely no doubt that this project wound up working and being completed very, very efficiently, very well, very professionally, very, very much in the interests of not only the town of Guilford, but really in all of the students here, but for generations moving forward. This has been a fabulous project, and that is in no small part to Scott and his stewardship of the committee. So I think that they are, when did they meet again? Tomorrow, is it?
They meet tomorrow evening. Their regular meeting has been pushed to a 7:30 start time, and at 7 o'clock, people will be here to acknowledge and thank Scott for his contribution.
So I would like to abandon the chair's ordinary prerogative of not making motions and actually make a motion, and I would like us to make a motion that we resolve to thank Scott Pinkney for his dedicated service on behalf of the educational mission of the Guilford Public Schools and his stewardship of the Guilford High School Building Committee, and that we, or prepare that in a letter to give to him tomorrow evening. So I would like to make that motion.
Second.
Any other discussion, questions, comments? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So I will, Dr. Freeman, I'll take care of doing that.
Great. Thank you very much.
The, but that's gonna be 7 o'clock here.
I believe it is 7 o'clock here. I know that 7 o'clock is accurate. They have been meeting at the community center for their summer meetings. I will confirm the location and get an email out to all of you.
The invitation for the thing for Scott from 7 to 7:30 didn't mention community center.
Yes.
I know that because I appeared there last Tuesday.
Thank you.
That would be girly.
They have been meeting at the community center, so 7 o'clock at the community center.
I hope that's accurate, but I do know that that invitation that went out to all of us for the 7 to 7:30 piece of it said community center.
That should be accurate. That's where they've been meeting during summer hours.
Okay.
All right. And by the way, anybody who's expressing any concerns about that there are some, the planted trees that didn't make it over the summer, they're going to be replaced at the cost of the contractors, and they'll be fine.
That is true.
I guess we should mention also about the trees in front of Adams. I know that that has been a concern of some peoples, that there were some maple trees in front of, by the bus loop at Adams, and they were removed over the summer at the order of the town tree warden. That was not the Board of Education's idea. It was not Mrs. Walker's idea. It was something that they were inspected by the town tree warden, and the tree warden concluded that they represented a safety risk, given their age and condition and location. If there was ever a location where you wanted to make sure trees were in pretty good shape, it would be by the bus loop to a school. But in any event, they were removed over the summer at the order of the town. There will be replacements that are put back in there that meet, that will be, I think, aesthetically pleasing, but also don't present the same issues that the maples did. So just wanted to make, like, make sure this wasn't an anti-tree position being taken by Mrs. Walker or somebody else at Adams.
That is correct.
So the town liaison, town committee liaisons, anything? Is anything going on with?
Land Acquisition Committee met without me last, how dare they?
Okay. Anything else, building or town committee-wise? Okay. Learn Board of Directors, do they meet in the summer, or they don't? So you probably don't have a report then. Okay. Item 11, public questions?
No, I don't have a question. Thank you for having me.
Okay. We'd give you extra time if you had one.
No, I was really interested in the student enrollment, and I'm a parent at Calvinley, so I enjoy my daughter's small class size, I just wanted to make sure that we're still keeping it small.
That is very much our goal. I should just repeat the question, that the comment was that a parent wanted to make sure that we were keeping our, that we maintained our commitment to small class sizes. We very much have worked toward that end.